Recording in progress.
Hereby called to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, February 13th, 2023. Mr. Trechun, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Eton.
Present.
Councilmember Schroder.
Here.
Mayor Row.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, at the end on my right, and our city manager, Pat Trechun, at the other end on my left. We also have staff and other guests who will be participating in the meeting as various items come up. Would like to remind folks, if you have a cell phone, to silence it or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting as we go forward. Mr. Trechun, do we have anybody participating remotely this evening at this point?
Yes, we have one person for an agenda item later in the meeting.
Okay.
I think seven each.
Want to remind folks, if you're participating remotely, that if you want to speak to an item and you're a member of the public, not a designated speaker, an intended speaker, the way to let us know as an agenda item comes up and the public comment opportunity arises is to use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and let us know, and then we'll make sure and bring you into the meeting. And you can make your comments or ask your question. Same rules apply to remote participants as due to other participants in terms of length of time and all the other rules, which we'll go through in a little bit here. But just wanted to make folks aware of that who are participating remotely, that raise your hand feature is kind of important in that regard. Also, we don't require you to turn on your camera, but you do have to turn on your mic and unmute that so that we can hear what you have to say. With that, we'll go ahead and go to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can stand, if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda this evening is consideration of our agenda. And I'll check first, as I was doing with staff, to see if there are any changes from a staff perspective this evening.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
No changes. All right. And then check with the council. Are there any council requesting changes to the agenda this evening?
No.
All right. No items to remove from the consent agenda? Items to add to the agenda? No. All right. Then do want to check in with the public. So we do have at the, on the second page of our agenda, towards the end, we have item 10, which is, we call our consent agenda. And there's a number of items on there, items A through H. And normally, those are taken up as a single motion without much opportunity for discussion. But we do want to check at the beginning of the meeting and see if anybody is here for an item in section 10. And if somebody is, we can remove that item from that portion of the meeting, move it earlier in the meeting for you to be able to ask a question or make a comment. Is there anyone here for an item in section 10 of tonight's agenda, 10A through 10H? For anybody participating remotely for, you said it was for seven?
Seven H, I believe.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right. Then, Councilmember Eton.
Go ahead.
The person does have her hand raised, so.
Okay.
Should I bring her in?
Can we bring her in? If it's, I'm presuming they might want to speak to an item in section 10 of the agenda?
Yeah, so.
May we even approve the agenda?
I understand. This is to get to that point.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
They're not coming into the panel this room.
They may have. Oh, is it a technical issue?
She's in right now.
Okay. Can you hear us? Remote participant, are you in the meeting?
Okay, I think she's unmuted.
Can you hear the remote participant we just brought into the meeting?
Julie, Stevie?
Hello?
Sorry, I'm trying. Are you able to hear me now?
We can hear you, yes. Did you want?
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to get my, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda. I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Is the, is the, are we talking about the short-term rental?
No, this would, this would be other items later in the agenda after that item.
Okay.
So if you're here for that, we'll definitely have an opportunity.
Perfect, okay, sorry.
Nope, that's all right. It's, it's okay to check in.
Thanks.
Yeah. Now you've got it down, so next time when we bring you back in, it'll be all smooth as silk. All right. It doesn't sound like then we have anybody here for an item in section 10 of tonight's agenda, the consent items. So a motion to approve the agenda as presented would be in order.
Here.
Councilmember Eton?
I would like, I thank you for looking at me intently, reminding me that I had something. I would like us to consider Keystone Community Food Shelf has approached us about a letter of support for their community food shelf that would support folks here in Roseville as well as North St. Paul area. And I would like to have us consider that support letter for them that would go to the state legislature.
Is that a timely item where we wouldn't want to go through the normal process of requesting it go on a future agenda and then bringing it back to the council to figure out how to do that and then bringing it back?
Ideally, yeah. It's not, no, no hair off our backs here on this one. Is that the right term? Probably not. Skin off our backs, there we go. Or hair. Sorry, guys. But.
Depends on where we're starting from, I guess.
But to get it before the legislature so it stays in their process of decision-making, yes.
So appropriate by the council rules then would be a motion to add that to tonight's agenda?
Yes, please.
Using that means to do so. Is that your motion?
Yes, please.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, it's seconded by Councilmember Graff. So it's been moved by Councilmember Eton, seconded by Councilmember Graff to add an agenda item. I'm presuming we'd probably make it like a seven H. No, wait.
Five.
It's off to seven J. Thank you.
Oh, thanks for covering me.
To discuss the, to discuss the support letter for Keystone at the legislature for their legislative request. I think it's a, is it a bonding request?
Yes.
All right. Discussion on the motion, Councilmember Eton, as the maker of the motion to add this to the agenda?
This is an important support for a lot of our residents here in Roseville, and we actually did a letter for them last year. This is an update based on new construction numbers and understandings of the, where they're at in the process for raising funds. So it's really an update of our support. But, so I think it's important for our community.
Any other discussion on the motion to add this item to the agenda? We can certainly have discussion about the item as, as we get to it, if it is added. All right. Hearing no discussion. We've got the motion before us to add an item seven J, which would be to discuss the letter of support for the Keystone bonding request. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We've added that item. Then, a motion to approve the agenda as amended would be in order?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve tonight's agenda as amended. A discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment that isn't related to one of the agenda items we have ahead of us tonight. We do provide those opportunities for members of the public to speak to agenda items as they come up. But we also do want to start each meeting with an opportunity for members of the public to speak to anything that might be of interest to people in the city or related to city business, but not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak to an item not on tonight's agenda? This would be an opportunity for a remote participant to raise their hand in that instance as well. But I think we know that person, I think is for an agenda item. Anyone here for a non-agenda item to speak in more general comment at this time? All right. Doesn't appear to be the case, so we'll move on with our agenda then. Thank you, everyone. We don't have any recognitions or donations this evening. We also don't have any items that were removed from consent, so we can proceed right into our business items. Our first business item this evening, item 7A, is to receive a presentation from Northeast Youth and Family Services from the new president and CEO, Angela Louis DeMello. And it's great to meet you and welcome you to the meeting. Feel free to have a seat at one of the microphones at the table. And we look forward to your presentation this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here. So my name is Angie Lewis DeMello, and I'm the president and CEO of Northeast Youth and Family Services. Thank you, mayor and city council members. I'm here to talk a little bit about NYFS's services and history and some of the challenges that we're facing in the mental health sector right now. And should I just advance on the computer?
Yeah.
That sounds good. Thank you. So Northeast Youth and Family Services was founded in 1976. Our coming together story is really quite wonderful. Ten different municipalities in the region came together and said, we have a real need for services for youth and that we don't have any nonprofit services at this time. And so those 10 municipalities came together and founded NYFS. And so we started with four staff and our juvenile diversion services and our youth mental health services, both programs which are still going strong today. We have two locations. We have a location just up the street in Lexington and Shoreview. And then we have a second location in White Bear Lake. That's our kind of specific mental health clinic. And our mission is really about supporting the whole family. We really see youth and families as a building blocks of society and that the more we invest in healthy families, the more we invest in a healthy society. We are really dedicated to services that are trauma-informed and culturally responsive. So that means that we're really attuning our services to the cultural and linguistic needs of our clients as well as ensuring that kind of the process for seeking care is responsive to all the different adversities that people experience in their lives, trauma, stress, chronic stressors, et cetera. And our mission is really about ensuring access. So as I said, cultural and linguistic access, but also financial access and logistical access. We have a lot of folks that have a lot of various barriers to receiving care, one of which is medical insurance. And so we have a sliding fee scale that slides down to zero for individuals that don't have medical insurance or are underinsured, have very high deductibles. And it means that they're unable to access care due to that. And then the other part about NYFS that's really unique are these longstanding partnerships. So we have relationships with 15 municipalities in Northeast Ramsey County, five different law enforcement agencies with our community advocacy program that we have, and then three different school districts, including Roseville School District. We have a relationship with the Ramsey County Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Department, both of which support our youth diversion services. And one of the particularly unique things about NYFS is that in these relationships with the municipalities, it's a bidirectional relationship. And so we have city council members that sit in our board. Wayne Graff is our board chair. And this means that we're able to have pretty immediate feedback from the communities that we're serving about the services and the gaps in services that we have. So we can create programs and respond to need pretty right away, which is pretty cool. So maybe I should just stop for a second and forget to share a little bit about myself. So like I said, I'm new to the position. I've been at NYFS since the summer. I was previously an executive director at another mental health clinic in downtown St. Paul for a few years prior to this. My background is as a clinical social worker, so I spent a lot of time specifically as a trauma therapist with youth and kind of came to NYFS because I had done some consulting with them about rolling out their trauma-informed services back in 2015, 2016, and just really fell in love with the organization and their mission and the staff. And so I feel kind of like I've come full circle back in the position I've been with the organization now, long enough to kind of get a handle on things. I feel like I have a good assessment of where the organization is at and the larger challenges that we're seeing in the sector. So to share a little bit about our statistics, we serve a variety of folks and a variety of services. Our, last year, we served 786 individuals directly, and then we also served family members for many of those individuals. Our services in our clinic and our outpatient service or school-based services, excuse me, were some of our busiest. The 24 that you see is our day treatment program. That's a program that's really intensive. I'll talk more about it. But those youth are with us many hours every day for services. So more depth, less breadth in terms of care. And then our community-based services, I think is really indicative of the care that NYFS provides is the total number of appointments we had last year, more than 21,000 appointments, which really speaks to that depth of care, how much we're working with each individual in order to help them move through whatever challenges they're experiencing in their life. And then the other thing I would point out here is the family and couples therapy sessions. So when we talk about serving the whole family, we really mean it. Many of our interventions with families were with the whole family, with the youth and the people that matter to them in their life. We also did 337 assessments. So that's new folks that came in to get a psychological assessment to determine what mental health symptoms and mental health concerns they had. So a little bit about our fiscal situation. So on the revenue side, you can see kind of where our revenue comes from. Get about 122,000 annually from individual donations, about 408 from municipalities. That 15, those 15 municipalities pooled. 988 is through contracts and grants. So that's the majority of our funding is through foundations and contracts. We receive funding through third-party billing for the folks that do have medical insurance. And then we own the building in Shoreview, so some of our revenue comes through occupancy on the first and third floor. And we've had a longstanding relationship with the Mounds View Reach program, and they occupy the first floor of the building. In terms of expenditures, the majority of all of our expenses are staffing. That's how we create change in the community is through the human beings that work for NYFS, who are extremely skilled and talented people with big hearts. The majority of that is in our mental health services. Then we have our community services, management, billing, all of those kinds of administrative functions, and then fundraising. For Roseville, in our contract with Roseville last year, we provided the equivalent of $192,000 worth of services. And the contract total amount was $95,320, which also included the community advocacy programming. So I just want to take a moment to talk a little bit about what's happening in youth mental health right now. I'm sure you've all heard that we're really struggling as both a sector but also youth in general following the pandemic are really struggling. I, you know, have said, I worked with youth that have experienced trauma for, for a long time before becoming an administrator. And what has been happening has been startling even to me. We have youth coming in with really severe mental health and resource challenges, many more significant symptoms, much lower functioning, sitting on wait lists for months and months because they can't receive access to care. And that increases the intensity of their need and how acute that need is, how quickly they need to receive services. And so we're seeing folks that maybe had come in with some depression or had come in with some anxiety, but now they're coming in with paralyzing panic attacks and can't attend school, or nightmares, or not, you know, thinking about suicide, but multiple attempts. Those sorts of things are really new in terms of the intensity. We've also seen a significant increase, especially in adolescent girls, in the number of traumas they're coming in with at the time of the start of services. So there's been a study in the country. We're seeing about one in three youth, just startling numbers, meet full criteria for mental health condition, which is about a threefold increase since COVID. And on the Minnesota Student Survey, I'm sure you've all seen some stuff about this, 19% of 11th grade males and 46, almost one in two 11th grade females, report having mental health symptoms that are lasting six months or longer. So really long-term mental health conditions. This has skyrocketed. I would argue that likely it's underreported and especially by the adolescent boys in the study. So we're seeing this at just really high numbers. And then if we look at the adverse childhood experiences, which is that assessment of trauma, zero to 18, we're also seeing those really significantly increase. 43% of 11th grade males and 64% of 11th grade females report at least one significant trauma that they've already experienced. So when I talk about folks coming in in a state of crisis, they really are. And then the bigger picture issues are workforce challenges. So what's been happening in the mental health sector is that we knew we were going to have significant workforce challenges about five or six years ago. We're looking at the retirements. We knew that folks weren't entering the field at the rate that they were exiting from it. And COVID expedited all of that. So what we've seen is kind of two things. One, a lot of folks that had planned retirements that were supposed to be later have retired much earlier than anticipated. And we're also seeing just people drop like flies from the mental health sector in general and youth services in particular. I'm not sure if you've seen that Star Tribune article, it's a number of months ago, that showed 30,000 people have left the nonprofit sector in the last two years in Minnesota alone. It's incredible. And then we're seeing that in terms of staff reporting that the effects of working with youth that are struggling so much has affected their mental health so significantly. Every staff we've lost, we've not lost to another mental health position, we've lost to leaving the field. And so that increases the wait lists, it increases the acuity and the severity of the clients that are coming in our front door. And then we have this cycle, right, of folks needing really high care. And in general, the mental health sector has been struggling because the salaries people get after receiving a master's or PhD are often lower than they had before they were with a bachelor's degree. And so the sector has real suppression in terms of salaries and wages, especially in the nonprofit field. So we're just seeing all of this kind of churn. NYFS is trying to get really creative about how to address it, so I'll talk about that in a second. But these are some of the things that we're doing at NYFS to try and provide services to our community. We have our clinic-based mental health services. That's individual couples, family, and group therapy. We're trying to increase the group therapy offerings that we have because it's less resources to serve more people. We have both in-person and telehealth services, and we serve very little from four years old all the way throughout the entire lifespan. We are adding some additional services. We've had art therapy, but we're adding play therapy and horticulture services. We've had some trauma therapy. We're increasing that in terms of having a lot of different variety of offerings so that we don't have kind of one-size-fits-all services, especially right now. Our school-based services, we're in three school districts, White Bear, Roseville, and Mounds View. And those, we have an embedded model. So we're not kind of going in and being a little isolated clinic. We're going in and serving a caseload of clients, but then we're also serving the school. We're working with drop-ins. When there's a crisis at the school, we're doing a large intervention. So we really see ourselves as part of that system, and that's been really successful. And we're in elementary all the way through high school in those school districts. And then finally, we have our net stay treatment program. This is for those folks that have really high symptoms, are struggling to be able to kind of go to traditional mainstream school system and make sure that their mental health needs are met. So they're with us half-day for therapy. And then the Mounds View School District onsite provides the other three days or three hours of education each day. And those folks, we're seeing almost double the number of traumas. So we, before COVID, we would see kids coming in with four or five significant traumas. Now they're coming in with nine, 10, 11, just skyrocketed. And then our community services programs, we have our juvenile diversion program, our youth diversion program. We get referrals from all over the place, and the goal is for us to kind of get to youth really early so that at that very first offense, maybe before things have gotten escalated, we're able to provide services that both are restorative but also focus on case management. So we're getting underneath whatever the issue is. We have really high success rate, typically between 95 and 97%. So very low recidivism in that program. We just started a community connections program, which is a seven-week program to help youth perceive a brighter future. This came out of the youth telling us they wanted this service. And that's been really wonderful. So they do career exploration, they go to, and we're launching a program in Roseville. We got some funding from the Roseville Community Foundation to do that in Roseville and not with the diversion youth, but with general youth because we're seeing such this need, all these youth that are kind of not meeting developmental goals, especially because of COVID and adolescents helping them launch and see what's possible. And then finally, our community advocacy services. And these are the, those five contracts we have with different law enforcement agencies. And our goal is to co-create public safety by providing all of the services that are out of scope for law enforcement. So this is housing referrals, immediate crisis intervention, mental health and chemical dependency intervention, neighbor disputes, you know, senior elderly services. There's a lot that goes into that. But we found that to be really, really powerful. And then finally, just to say kind of where we're headed, we really are trying to do more to serve more folks and triage better. If we have such limited resources, how do we get folks some coping skills and some information about mental health? Because maybe they don't need an every-week therapy intervention. And then continuing to expand the variety of different services we're offering. We want to expand our advocacy program to have some specialized advocates for domestic violence, for youth, for elders. We're enhancing our work as a training site so we can help funnel more providers and especially BIPOC providers into the field. And we're doing a ton, and I'm really passionate about this, related to staff wellness, so we don't see the same attrition that we've seen. So that's where NYFS is at. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the information and the services that are provided. And, you know, I don't think, having been on the board before and just knowing what's kind of going on in the world of mental health, there's, you know, it's, it's always got to be frustrating that you can't solve all the problems with the limited resources you have. But I think that the thing that NYFS has done well since 1976 is being innovative and creative and always thinking of better ways to try to come up with solutions and really being focused on the people that we're, we, that, I'm still used to saying that, that are being served.
That's good.
And I think that's, that's wonderful to see. It's continuing and appreciate your leadership and stepping right in and taking, taking the reins and being a part of that. Are there questions or feedback from members of the council for our representative from NYFS? Councilmember Schroder?
Again, thank you for presenting that. Being a new person on the council, I had been looking at your organization and getting familiar with it actually a few months ago. And I am very impressed in what the services you're providing and very supportive of, you know, the partnerships and everything else. And, and it's nice to see that you're going to try to expand it too, because you're right, we have all ages, including the elder, you know, that I think have so many more things that they're dealing with. And so to have resources like this is really, really important. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Graff?
I would just comment, one of the things about being on the board, and I know that when we used to go to Midland Hills, and I know Jason, you, some, some of you have been to those meetings when we had those in, in person, was there was always what we called success stories. And I think those are crucial because it actually tells us not, not personal details about someone, but it tells us kind of the generalities of their experience. And then when they've gone through some of the NYFS programs, how that has changed their lives and their families' lives. And those are, that's what our goal is, of course, with all this work. So thank you, Angie, for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Other questions or feedback? I did want to note also that you had mentioned the, the sliding scale fees. And, and I think, if I remember right, that that's significantly supported by the funding from the cities.
Municipalities.
Because, once again, for folks who have insurance, there is reimbursement. And then there are the grants and the contracts, such as with Mounds View Schools. But that, the difference that the communities support is making, among the other areas, certainly supporting some of the senior programs and things like that, but also that notion of helping out for people that have that financial need. So I wanted to emphasize that, that for folks that are taxpayers watching and hearing about this and wondering why your city government is supportive of this organization, you know, that's, that's one of the big reasons why. But I think also, once again, is, is the senior services that are provided and some of the other, you know, we certainly, I think, help support the diversion, some other aspects of the operation. So wanted to note that for folks. And once again, welcome and thank you for all the work you're doing. And if anybody in the community is interested in volunteering or otherwise supporting NYFS, certainly you can go to NYFS.org and, and check it out. And I would encourage folks to do that. So it's a very valuable organization. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next this evening, we have a hearing related to a request from the Lake Owasso Water, I think it's the Lake Owasso State Voting Association for concurrence in their request from Ramsey County for a permit for their water ski slalom course. And we've got Deputy Chief Adams with us this evening to introduce this item, which is an annual consideration each year for us. Welcome, Deputy Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to present the Lake Owasso State Voting Association request to have a permit renewal for the water ski slalom course on Lake Owasso. Just a reminder that the actual permit is issued through Ramsey County. With that said, in 1997, the Roseville City Council established a policy allowing for public comment anytime there was a permit involving a Roseville lake. For that reason, the Lake Owasso State Voting Association submitted a written request seeking approval from the city to apply for a permit through Ramsey County for the slalom course. It will be the same location that it has been for over 50 years and has no financial impacts on the city. They did supply a certificate of insurance, and it is the staff's recommendation to approve their request so they may move forward with the permit application through Ramsey County.
All right, thank you, Chief Adams. And is there a representative of the Voting Association this evening with us that would like to say anything in support of their request? Doesn't always happen, but if you want to, feel free to come on up and, and say anything. Otherwise, just be available for questions if there are any. All right. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this request from the Lake Owasso State Voting Association for city concurrence in their request to Ramsey County Sheriff for the approval? the approval of their course? Anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right, doesn't appear to be the case. Any hands raised?
There's none.
Okay. Very well then, we'll close the opportunity for public comment on this item, and we'll go to council consideration. Once again, the request is to concur in the request, or to concur in the request from the State Voting Association for their permit from Ramsey County Sheriff. Councilmember Adams?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Schröder to concur in that request. Any discussion on the motion? As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Adams?
No. Have fun skiing.
As the secondary, Councilmember Schröder?
No.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? I think this has operated for so many years in Roseville now that it's become sort of almost habit, but we, I can't remember the last time we had complaints or concerns raised by our neighbors and residents on the lake, so I think that's a testament to the operation of this course and the neighborliness of the folks involved, so we do appreciate that. We've got the motion before us then to concur in that request for a permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we concur. So good luck in that, and I look forward to, as Councilmember Adams said, seeing you out on the lake this summer. Next on the agenda, we've got a number of items which also Deputy Chief Adams is here for, and on perhaps a less positive or enthusiastic note, but we've got a number of enforcement violations related to service or sale of tobacco and alcohol products to minors, and we'll just take them up as they are listed here. So the first item is a tobacco violation related to the Speedway on Rice Street, and I'll turn it over once again to Chief Adams for the introduction of this item.
Thanks, Mayor. Each year, the Roseville Police Department conducts two tobacco compliance checks of all of our license holders. This year, we conducted our first round of checks in July, and in that round, we had two businesses fail their compliance checks. The second round of checks, which we're here for today, occurred in December with a total of three tobacco compliance failures, one of which we'll be discussing here today. I'll start with a brief summary of this violation at the Rice Street Speedway. On Saturday, December 17th, a plainclothes police officer and a 19-year-old compliance checker entered Speedway. The 19-year-old compliance checker approached and registered and requested to purchase a pack of Swisher Sweets and a six-pack of beer, which we'll be discussing later. The cashier did not review identification and sold the tobacco and alcohol to our checker anyway. The cashier was issued an administrative fine, which has not been paid to date. Our community action team is continuing to follow up on that aspect. This is the second violation for this location of Speedway within 36 months. The previous failure was in July of 2022. It's staff's recommendation for the council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to City Code Section 306.09 for the second violation within 36 months, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of a $2,000 fine and a three-day tobacco license suspension. I have spoken to Speedway and learned that they would have a representative here tonight. I'm not sure if they're here, though.
All right. Representative from Speedway, feel free to come up and have a seat at the other microphone and provide us whatever insight you can in response to the citation.
My name is Dan Poulzine, and I'm the area leader. I oversee 16 locations. This particular location I became in charge of in August, which is prior to the actual violation. One of the things that we did was we required all of our employees to go through recertification, retraining through CBTs for both tobacco and alcohol. So everybody's been retrained there, and we're going to do that ongoing every three months. They're going to have to, they're required to do a refresher on those CBTs. The employee was terminated immediately after the violation. We did have some manager changes at that location, and I'm confident that it will not be an issue going forward.
All right, thank you for being here this evening and representing your organization. I did want to just clarify the recertification of the employees. Did that happen after the notification of the violation, or had that happened since between August?
It happened after. Yeah. So since December, we re-certified everybody.
Got it.
And then we will be doing that quarterly going forward to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Appreciate that. Are there other questions from the councilmembers for the representative from Speedway? All right. Thank you again for being here this evening, and I appreciate your being a part of the process here.
Okay.
And stay tuned for what happens as far as our consideration of the penalties.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to this item this evening? Anyone from the public wish to comment on the request for the presumptive penalty on the tobacco violation for Speedway on Rice Street? Seeing no one, then we'll close the opportunity for public comment and move to council consideration. I did want to just check with you, Chief Adams, on the, because we also have an alcohol violation as part of this, my understanding is that the suspensions would not be concurrent with each other, that they would happen at different times for the alcohol and the tobacco violations, to the extent there are two suspensions. I apologize if I didn't get that straight, looking through the packet, but...
That is correct, Mayor. If there were two different violations for separate things calling for the suspension, it would be dealt on different days. It does not appear for the off-sale that there will be for the first violation coming up here. But if that did become the case, we would do them on separate days.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions from the council or a motion related to this request to administer the presumptive penalty? Councilmember Graff?
I just have a question, and it's more of a general one. I'm not speaking of it for this particular case, but what would require a revocation of license? How far do we go before that's considered?
It becomes, I'll have to look at the classification, which I brought with me, but I know on the on-sale, it would be the fourth violation where it would come to council for revocation of license. Do let me take a peek real quick.
Sure.
Councilmember Graff, if you don't mind.
And that's related to the tobacco or to the alcohol?
I will come into light. So for an off-sale, which this would be the case for Speedway, it would be the fourth violation would be rules for revocation.
Okay. Thank you. I just think it's important for the public to know that, so, and the businesses, because we do take these things seriously.
And that's the fourth violation within a 36-month period as well. And the other thing, too, is that the council always has the discretion in our code to deviate from the presumptive penalties either upward or downward based on circumstances. So I suppose conceivably, in a particularly egregious situation, not yet up to that fourth violation, there is the potential that council could decide to revoke a license. And then under code for the liquor side of things, the maximum penalty would be $2,000 on a financial side. That's our limit in terms of financial penalties.
Right.
All right. Do we have a, oh, Councilmember Strawn?
Thank you. Deputy Chief, I was wondering if you could speak, it's been brought to our attention in the police reports and such, this concern on the part of the seller and the seller's various family members getting involved. Is that something that we need to concern ourselves about as council or something, just a matter of additional information?
So the report mentioned, which I didn't have firsthand contact with, the family of the seller. What I would note is that the seller was an adult in this case, but the family members did have concern that she was the only person working without a manager, and so they didn't believe that the check was fair, as they should have oversight from a manager, is the complaint from the family.
And it is legal for someone underage to be selling these products to some, to...
I believe they still do have to be over 18 to sell the products, but they don't have to be of legal age for consumption to sell products.
That's correct.
All right. Once again, we've got the request before us to approve administering the presumptive penalty as outlined in the code. Is there a motion from the city council?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Adams to authorize administering the presumptive penalty for this tobacco violation specifically. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that presumptive penalty is authorized. The second piece of the Speedway incident is the liquor sale violation, which occurred at the same time, and I'll turn it once again over to Deputy Chief Adams to introduce that side of it, if there's anything else to add at this point.
That's great. Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the Roseville Police Department conducts two alcohol compliance checks of our alcohol sale license holders. This year, the first round of checks was also done in July. We had seven businesses fail during that first round. The second round, which we're here for today, was completed in December with a total of four failures. In 2022, all businesses with the city liquor license were mailed a letter advising them that the city would be conducting two alcohol compliance checks. The letter also reminded them of the requirement that all employees must undergo annual approved server training program. At the mayor's discretion, I'll go through each four of these, but the first one being Speedway. A brief summation on Saturday, December 17th, 19-year-old compliance checker and a plainclothes officer went to Speedway located at 2295 Rice Street to conduct a compliance check. The 19-year-old compliance checker ordered a pack of Swisher Sweets cigars and a six-pack of beer. The cashier had to call a manager for directions on how to access the alcohol. Upon receiving the directions, she retrieved the beer and, without asking for identification, sold the checker the beer and cigars. To date, again, the seller has not paid the fine on this infraction. I later spoke with corporate management, received documentation of their employee training files, and as previously mentioned, they have retrained since that point as well. I've been speaking with their corporate office, who has been extremely responsive to any of my, any of my requests. This is the first off-sale liquor license violation. It's staff's recommendation for the council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to City Code for off-sale license holders for the first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $1,000 and no liquor license suspension.
All right, thank you again, Chief Adams. Questions from the council on the liquor violation? Councilmember Strawn?
Is that a deviation from, is the penalty a deviation from the minimum mandatory? Because we say, what we see here says the one-day suspension as well.
So there's a difference between the on-sale and off-sale suspension, and for this one, this is an off-sale, which does, the council with the fee schedule chose not to provide a suspension for the first violation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to the presumptive penalty for the liquor violation for Speedway on Rice Street in this case? Doesn't appear to be the case, so we'll go ahead and close the opportunity for public comment and move to council consideration. Once again, the request is to authorize the administration of the presumptive penalty, which once again is the $1,000 fine. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Adams to authorize the administration of that penalty. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that penalty is authorized. That then brings us to our second alcohol violation this evening, which is for Crave, and I'll turn it over once again to Chief Adams.
A brief summary of Crave located at 1595 Highway 36. On Saturday, December 17th, a 19-year-old compliance checker and plainclothes officer went to Crave to conduct a compliance check. The checker sat at the bar and ordered a glass of wine. The employee then poured the wine and provided it to the checker without asking for identification. The server was administratively cited for the violation and has subsequently paid the fine. Crave provided copies of their server training, which showed that they are in compliance. This is Crave's first violation in 36 months. It is staff's recommendation for the council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to City Code for on-sale license holders for a first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of a $1,000 fine and a one-day liquor license suspension. Crave did indicate that they would have a representative here tonight to answer any questions, should the council have any.
All right. Other questions from the council? And first of all, I'll check, is there a representative from Crave here? Got it. Can you stand for questions? You don't have any additional statement you wish to make? Okay. Questions from the council for either staff or the representative from Crave? All right. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this request to administer the presumptive penalty for this first violation for Crave? Seeing no one, we'll close the opportunity for public comment and move to council consideration. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Schröder. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, that presumptive penalty is authorized. The next one is for Devani's.
Thank you, Mayor. A brief summary, Devani's located at 1905 West Perimeter Drive. On Saturday, December 17th, a 19-year-old compliance checker and a plainclothes officer went to Devani's to conduct a compliance check. Once at the counter, the compliance checker ordered a beer. The employee then checked the identification, but proceeded to serve the checker the beer. The server was administratively cited for the violation and has subsequently paid the fine. Devani's provided copies of their training records, which showed compliance. This is Devani's first violation in 36 months. It is staff's recommendation for the council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to City Code for on-sale license holders for a first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $1,000 and a one-day liquor license suspension. I'm not certain if anybody from Devani's is here today.
All right, we'll check if there is a representative from Devani's here this evening. Doesn't appear to be the case. Questions from the council for staff on the Devani's case? All right. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this particular violation and presumptive penalty request? Seeing no one, we'll close the opportunity for public comment, move to council consideration. We've got the request before us. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schröder to authorize the presumptive penalty of the $1,000 fine and one-day suspension for the first violation at Devani's within 36 months. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, that penalty is authorized. And then I believe finally, on our list here this evening, is to consider the presumptive penalty for violation at Red Lobster, and I'll turn it over once again to Deputy Chief Adams.
Thanks, sir. Red Lobster located at 2330 Prior Avenue. Brief summary, on Saturday, December 17th, a 19-year-old compliance checker and a plainclothes officer went to Red Lobster to conduct a compliance check. The checker and plainclothes officer sat at a table, at which time the checker ordered an alcoholic sangria. The employee then checked identification and proceeded to serve the checker the alcoholic drink. The server was administratively cited for the violation and has subsequently paid the fine. Red Lobster provided copies of their server training records, which showed compliance. This is Red Lobster's second violation in 36 months. It is staff's recommendation for the council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to City Code for on-sale license holders for a second violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a five-day liquor license suspension. I spoke with Red Lobster, and they did indicate someone would be here tonight to answer questions, should you have any.
All right. Thank you. And do you have a statement to make or just standing for questions?
I would like to.
Okay. Feel free to have a seat in front of the microphone, and once again, just introduce yourself before you make your comments. Welcome.
My name's Greg McKellips, and I'm the general manager at Red Lobster here in Roseville. One, I'm deeply embarrassed, and so is the company, and a little bit nervous, so I apologize. I wanted to speak to, one, we have either recertified or certified. Our policy is no one gets to serve alcohol until they go through the training in the first place. So we failed twice, and this is, like I say, very embarrassing. So I've done a couple things that I thought would be, you should be aware of. One, we hired an outside company to actually come in and, on a monthly basis, perform compliance checks for us. It's called bars, and that started in February, and actually it was just last week, and we did pass that one. Secondly, all my staff now, we do what we call a lobster talk. And so this is one page, and on it, it's mentioned twice about checking IDs. I stamped this, and I put the born-on date for that date. Now, they get this, we talk about it, we talk about other things as well as what goes on in the business. And then I instruct them, they have to sign in and say they understand that they've been talked to about compliance checks. They're, I would say, in the industry, kind of extraordinary measures, you know, that isn't normally performed on a normal basis, and I just wanted to be where, you to be isn't normally performed on a normal basis, and I just wanted to be where, you to be aware that I take it personally. I've been in restaurant management for almost thirty-two years, and like I say, this is the first two times that I've ever even been involved in this. I know Red Lobster is not at all happy, and they take it very seriously as well, and I just want you to know that, moving forward, that this is a high priority for us. That employee has been terminated, the manager on duty has been getting the final written reprimand, and it has become topic number one every day in our restaurant. So, that's what I came to say.
We appreciate that, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council for either the representative or for staff on this particular case? Councilmember Graff?
Not so much a question, but a thank you for that proactive thing. I think that is brilliant on your company's part to have testing every, someone coming out and to do that. It just keeps it fresh in the servers' minds, because we don't want to be levying these things to people that are working. That's not our goal, we want to have compliance, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this particular violation and requested presumptive penalty? Seeing none, then, council, is there a motion on the Red Lobster case?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Ratten. Any discussion on the motion?
I just want to thank Mr. McKellips for his comments, appreciate that effort in taking it serious, really appreciate it. You know, we, our goal is to have compliance and not to be punitive if we don't need to be, so we'd rather have it go well.
That is absolutely the case, but we certainly want to hold people accountable as well, and this is part of that. So once again, we've got the motion before us to authorize the presumptive penalty, which in this case for a second violation within thirty-six months, is a five-day suspension and a $2,000 fine. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that penalty is also authorized. Councilmember Ratten?
I would like to have a future discussion of this right time, a future discussion on our off-sale first penalty. I know why it's the way it is, but I think we should look at that, it is very different.
The differential between on sale and off sale?
Differentiate between on and off, and just talk more about that, or ways we could go at that egg.
All right, fair enough. With that, also, it's worth noting again that the, at least in the case of Minnesota licenses, there are significant differences between the under-21 license and the over-21 license, not the least of which being is that one license is held this way to read, and the other is held this way to read, and then the under-21 has very significant language on it that indicates it's an under-21 individual, so, but of course, that doesn't matter if the person isn't checking the ID too. So, once again, we appreciate everybody, you know, being contrite and coming here this evening and telling us what they're doing going forward, but we really do hope to never see you again. That is the objective here. So, thank you again, and thank you to Chief Adams for going through all this, and that, I think, concludes our license violations this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, then, we move, change subjects a little bit here, and we have an opportunity to consider a short-term rental license that has been requested at 1901 Ryan Avenue. This item was before the council at our previous meeting and was tabled for further information, and that's why it's being brought back before us this evening. We have our community development director, Janice Gunlock, with us this evening, who is indicating that our codes compliance person, David England, will be leading this part of the discussion, so I'll turn it over to Mr. England for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this was discussed January 30th, council had requested the answer to two questions, one being, is the property currently rented as a regular rental, and if the property owners conduct or operate this type of short-term rental in other properties that they own. Both, the answer to number one was that it's currently rented as a long-term rental, which they do have a registration for, which they obtained very early on after they purchased the property, and they do not operate other properties as short-term rentals. The property owner is, I believe, on virtual meeting, attending virtually for the meeting for any follow-up questions or any additional items that the council would want. The application has been in and has been verified, and they are in compliance with all licensing, should be approved.
All right, thank you, Mr. England. Are there questions for staff at this time on this particular license request and the information that's been provided? Questions from the council for staff? All right, does a representative of the applicant wish to speak in support of their application at this time? If so, you raised, maybe the hand was already raised, and they're already coming back in.
They're coming in, they're there.
Hello and welcome back. We have you here, Julie? No, I think I, yeah. My promise that it would be smooth as silk, just, I failed on my promise.
Yes.
Okay, all right, welcome.
Hi, thank you, sorry for jumping in early, I didn't, I was having a hard time pulling up the agenda.
Oh, no, that's all right, that's all right.
Yeah, I just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of reach out, mostly for peace of mind of the neighbors, and just to clarify too, my sister and I purchased the property in December, we are from Pennsylvania. Between us, we have eight kids, and we, our parents still live in Pennsylvania, so we purchased the property with hopes for them to have someplace to stay when they come for long periods of time, hoping that between their stays, we could use it as a short-term rental. So, you know, we have bought it and applied for the short-term rental, and David England told us that we wouldn't be able to get that for months, then we applied for the long-term rental, and got that, I think, December 14th, and then we were able to rent it to, you know, some traveling nurses for thirteen-week stents, which is, you know, within the long-term rental. So, I do just want the neighbors to know, we weren't trying to do anything unlawful, we're trying to do everything, you know, correctly, and yeah, it is rented, but it is, we're not using it as a short-term rental until obviously we get the license. So, you know, ideally, we'd like to keep this house and potentially move my parents in there at some point, so I just wanted to kind of reassure the neighbors and the neighborhood that, you know, even using it as a short-term rental, we would hope to be in there more to maintain it up to our standards, and that, you know, that we are, really want it to be, you know, a nice property that we plan to keep up like it is our own, or like that we would want to live there. And so, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the neighbors and the neighborhood were aware that we were not trying to do, get away with something, we try to do everything right, and we hope that everyone is okay with that, we're not trying to create waves there.
All right, thank you, Julie, and what was your last name again?
Stevie.
All right, have we got a spelling on that?
We do.
Great, thanks.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Questions from the council for Ms. Stevie? Doesn't appear to be any questions from the council. Thank you again for being here and supportive of your application this evening, and
Yeah.
Standby, if other questions come up, we can bring you back in if we need it, but otherwise, I think we've, we've got what we need from you, unless there's anything else you wanted to add.
I think that...
All right, thank you again. All right, we've got this before us for consideration. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this requested short-term rental license at 1901 Ryan? Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? All right, we'll close the opportunity for public comment on this requested short-term rental license and move to council consideration. We've got the request before us and the additional information the council requested. Does council wish to take action? Councilmember Ratten?
I just want to ask, just to be pulled based on some feedback from the neighbors, I appreciate the work of staff and the information from the applicant, so I would move approval of this item.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Strong to approve this short-term rental license at 1901 Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Ratten is the maker of the motion.
They meet all our rules.
All right, Councilmember Strong?
I agree, I just want to reiterate, which seems to be the biggest concern of neighbors and others, is making sure to be attentive to the occupancy numbers and relationships between the people who are occupying the place.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, we've got the motion before us to approve that short-term rental license, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously, that license is approved, and we appreciate everybody's assistance, both on staff and the part of the applicant, to get us to this point this evening after it was tabled. That then brings us to a related discussion, which is item 7I, and that is to consider an ordinance which would amend Title IX, Section 909 of the city code, in order to temporarily stop the issuance of short-term rental licenses pending further council review of our licensing program. And I believe Ms. Gunlock, our community development director, will be introducing this item. Ms. Gunlock?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, this is a follow-up from January 30th. The council did make a motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance that would put a ban on the issuance of short-term rental licenses, so that additional time can be taken to reevaluate the licensing rules that are in Title IX, Section 909 of the city code. That ordinance is in your packet, I want to note, it stops the issuance of short-term rental licenses, as well as renewal of any licenses, because these licenses are needing to be approved on annual basis. We have six, well now seven, that are in effect, and we've provided those expiration dates in the council report. I also want to note that we have met the ten-day publication requirements for this ordinance, we have also provided written and email notification to these license holders of this action. And then lastly, this is a lengthy ordinance, so we have proposed a summary publication. That requires a four-fifths vote of the council in order to proceed with the summary publication. That's all I have, but I can certainly answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gunlock, and it's probably important to note again that this is intended to be a temporary measure to provide the city the opportunity to have additional research and conversations about the issue, if that's the desire of the council to do, and the outcome of that, there could be several different outcomes, one of which is a continuation of the ban on the issuance of short-term licenses as a relatively permanent decision, or reinstatement of the program with changes, or reinstatement of the program as it is currently, all those are possible. I think our intent, when we brought this forward, was not to have this last excessively long. I don't want to put words into the rest of the council's mouths in terms of exactly what that timeframe would be, we can have a conversation about that, but just to make it clear to everybody watching at home, as well as attending here, this is certainly not intended this evening to be the initiation of a permanent ban on short-term rental licenses without that additional process of having feedback and input and discussion and research as to what we should do going forward. So I wanted to make sure people understood that. So the matter before us this evening is whether to put this into effect, to give us that sort of room to breathe, if you will, to be able to have that further discussion and figure out where we want to go forward, and then that process, assuming that's what we want to do, would then happen subsequent to this, ultimately with something coming back to the council for consideration, once again, a range of possibilities, as I kind of outlined before. Just to note for the public as well, the soonest expiration date of a current license that would not be eligible for renewal under this would be, excuse me, June 22nd of this year, then a July, roughly mid-July, and then mid-September timeframe are the three sort of next possible renewals for various licenses, so that gives us some perspective on the timing that's involved here, potential that we might want to act within a certain amount of time, if we want to talk about that. With that, I'll open it up to the council for any questions for staff in relation to this action this evening. Council questions, Councilmember Strong?
I just want to confirm, this does not rescind or change any current licenses, it only impacts, or could possibly impact, renewal of the licenses that are out there, or the origination of any new licenses, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And also, this does not bring into consideration any owner-occupied rentals, is that correct?
That's correct, because the current ordinance is exempt owner-occupied rentals, whether they're short-term or long-term.
Okay, and is that something we could bring into consideration as we bring this subject forward in the short-term rentals?
Absolutely, but I do want to clarify that the ordinance that you're being asked to adopt tonight only relates to the short-term rental licensing program. If you wanted to make changes to the owner occupancy exemption under regular rental licensing, that is not affected by this ban, but you could still change your regulations
Okay.
on those, it's just not included in the temporary ban.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for staff at this time? Councilmember Graff?
What is a realistic timeline of getting this resolved?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't know the answer to that question, because I don't know what direction we have in order to pursue changes to regulations. You know, a lot of ideas have been thrown around, and I think there needs to be conversation about what we're able to enforce and what we are not able to enforce, but, you know, we can bring this back for some direction fairly quickly, and then depending on what that direction is, that will determine how much time it would take to prepare amendments for future consideration.
Well, the reason I'm asking is just out of fairness to the people who have licenses coming up, I think it's
Sure.
it's something to be considered, they have been in good faith with their licenses, and they have been complying with our ordinance, so for this to get thrown on them is not fair, in my opinion, so.
Certainly, the shortest timeframe that we have, or the longest timeframe to not impact would be about four months, then, in that case. Councilmember Schroder?
In relationship to this, could we require short-term rentals to keep track of their, who is renting and how long, and have that something that the staff could look at to help with their compliance issues?
I believe the answer to that question, I'm looking at the city attorney, is we can certainly require it, but if they don't show it to us, we cannot compel them to show it to us unless we have a court order.
So it'd be very similar to our requiring the production of training records for alcohol compliance checks. Usually that is complied with, but certainly, ultimately, that would be the way we would have to force compliance.
Yes, Mayor, council, that's correct, you would, the Fourth Amendment applies, and if you have a reason to need that information and it's not being given voluntarily, then you would be held to the standard necessary to perform a search.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the council for staff? And just before we go to public comment, because I know there's folks that are interested in this and want to speak to us this evening, I did want to note also, I think it would be appropriate this evening, if we're prepared to do so, to provide any, at least initial perhaps guidance to staff to start the process, to the extent we have that at this point, and, you know, certainly if it makes sense to have a follow-up discussion at a subsequent meeting, we can do that as well, but I know there's a lot of, once again, as Ms. Gunlock mentioned, a lot of thoughts that have been already sort of brought up, and it might be worth, if we are able to this evening, to provide some framework for the conversation going forward, if we can, so, but I would suggest that that would be a subsequent conversation, presuming that we do go ahead with the ordinance to, the ordinance change to temporarily stop the issuance and renewal of these short-term licenses. All right, with that, then, perhaps if Ms. Gunlock and Mr. England can step aside for just a moment, free up the microphones, we'll provide an opportunity for public comment this evening, and just because we haven't really had that up to this point in any substantial way, the public comment rules, just very briefly, are a three-minute time limit per speaker. We do ask that you address your comments or questions to the city council, and we will then, if there are questions that we can answer as a follow-up to the comment period, we'll do that. If we need further follow-up and getting back to people after the meeting, you know, we'll let you know as well. Once again, the three-minute time limit, if you can begin your comments with your name and either your street or your address for the public record, if your name is a name that isn't particularly obvious to spell for the record, there is a clipboard off to the side, so when you're finished with your comments, you can certainly step off to the side and just write down your name, so that we can make sure that the spelling is correct for the public record. Anything else I'm forgetting from the council? I think that's all the rules of the road, so with that, oh, the only other thing is if there's a lot of speakers that want to speak, we do have the two microphones in the two chairs, so if somebody's in the middle of their remarks, you can certainly come up and have a seat in the other chair and be prepared to start yours right after that. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Thanks, everyone, for your patience, and feel free to come up and let us know your thoughts. Hello and welcome.
Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor, my name is Luke Hemken, live on 3007 Arona Street, just down the road. I am a, my wife and I are short-term rental hosts, we love hosting guests here, we own a short-term rental in another city, but we're very interested in even having, opening our home to traveling guests in an owner-occupied situation. We, I went to Northwestern, my wife went to Bethel, there's lots of folks that we know that come to travel to town, to go see events at the schools and different things in the area, and so, from my perspective, just hearing what you guys discussed last time, and watching the, watching the city council meeting right before this, I'm all in favor of you guys taking the time you need to hear neighbors' concerns, thinking through all the logistics of how do we do this well. And I would love to be a resource to even share my opinion, just as an advocate for hosts and folks that are, that are hosting guests in the short-term rental space. So I think that if I was only to make one maybe potential change or amendment to what is proposed today is the not renewing the licenses that are, that are coming up. That's the only thing. Just, I think, Councilmember Graff, you said those acting in good faith that are operating in accordance to the ordinances. That would just be the only thing that I would suggest is, hey, maybe not, not renewing those licenses would be one suggestion. But like I said, I'm all in favor of you guys taking the time you need to think through this thoughtfully. We want to do this well, take care of the community, and I'd love to be able to help in that process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your offer. It has been duly noted. Mr. Mayor, we do have a number of people online. Nobody's raised their hand yet, but we may have that potential here, so just wanted to go over. Okay. No, thank you for making me aware of that. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening?
Hi, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I was the first person to apply for a license, though certainly not the first person to be an Airbnb or VRBO host in the city of Roseville. And I
If you could introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mickey or Michelle Mulville. I live at 1885 Shady Beach Avenue. I'm the first house by the boat launch by the park on Lake McCarran. I work in the music business, so Airbnb and VRBO literally enabled me to not lose my house during COVID because as everyone I think knows, the concert business was the first thing to close and the last thing to reopen. And I truly would have lost my house had this opportunity not come up. I think it's been, I don't think any of my neighbors would complain. I have almost exclusively families, a lot of grandparents or people coming here because their parents are in senior housing to spend the holidays with, grandparents coming for their children's graduations, birthdays, weddings. I had this state senator from North Dakota stay at the house with his family for a wedding. So I think I have a lot of very respectful, all my people are very respectful. And I would say that that is not often the case. No, I shouldn't say that's not often. Often the case with short-term or long-term rentals is a lot less care of the property and a lot less respect of the neighborhood. So I also have a lot of people that, I had two people and currently have someone right now that is staying at my house because their home on Como Lake was damaged. So they have a six and a three-year-old. She's a lobbyist for the, for the city of St. Paul. Is staying at the house so that their children can go to school and they're close to work. And at the same situation last year with a family that was in White Bear Lake whose house burned down, and they stayed in my house for two months so they could go to school and et cetera. So I would just also like to ask that, since my license is a first one renewed, that you decide quickly because I'll be, I have regular renters like a family of Mennonites who work at the state fair, for example, that stay, this will be their third year. And there are, people are already renting, so there'll be financial penalties to cancel on them at this point. So I would like that consideration as well, and thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item? And once again, for those participating remotely, if you do wish to speak to this item, just once again, use that raise your hand feature in Zoom to let us know, and we can bring you into the meeting, hopefully a little more gracefully than we've done it the last couple of times here. But anyone else from the public wish to speak to this item? Feel free to come on up. Hello and welcome.
Hi, council and mayor. My name is Connie Zietz, and I'm at 1277 Garden Avenue. The permit is under my husband's name. And so I'm speaking on behalf of him. He's with our kids right now. And so we own a few short-term rentals around the Twin Cities, and we rightfully got our permit. We have hosted many families, the majority of them coming here, come here to visit other family members, graduations. They come in, our house is a large, larger size, but, so we can host like full families rather than people that they can't, like a hotel cannot accommodate them because it's not furnished, it doesn't have a kitchen. We have very strict rules that our guests do follow, and we have outdoor cameras on all sections of the, like, coming into our house. So we have 24 hours, or 24/7 surveillance of that. And we're very strict with that because we lived in our, our Roseville house. We lived there for two years. We know our neighbors. We have their phone numbers, both of our neighbors on the right and left side. We've always said, hey, how is everything going? Are you guys comfortable? Like, let us know if you guys ever see anything weird because we, you know, we go there often, but we're obviously not on site. We only have had one issue after hosting dozens of people, and we were able to cancel that reservation within three hours of their arrival. We vetted them. Unfortunately, it wasn't a good group. And, you know, we only have so much control, but we do feel that we have more control doing short-term rental rather than long-term rentals. In this case, this is why we converted and decided to do this instead of long-term, because we've had a long-term rental before where the tenants that we had completely trashed the place. We needed to replace the entire floor. And if we did, we were like renting to long-term tenants, we can't control whether they're throwing parties every weekend, disrupting the neighborhood, maintaining the yard, all of that, all of those things. And we don't know what's going inside the property either. With the short-term renting, we can at least go in there very often because we also do the cleaning and the turnovers. So we are able to have full control of our property, and we also stay there. We also hang out there. We still see our neighbors. So we really enjoy the area. We don't want to sell the property. I am a first immigrant, or first-generation immigrant here. It was very happy, like, a moment like for us to get a property, and it just, we, we have also, like, my husband is from Ukraine, and he's been here for 15 years. So for him, we have family that comes in from out of the country as well. And many times, we can't host big families or something like that in our current home or somewhere else. So we were able to host a family recently from Ukraine that were refugees. So there's a lot of advantages for the short-term rental and having the house furnished. It costs a lot of money to do that, too, on our end, that we did that. And again, we have not had any troubles with our neighbors. We follow all of the guidelines. We have our permit. And we also have not had any police reports or anything like police called. And we actually have a police officer that lives across the street from us. And so I just hope that you guys can consider not, I guess, banning short-term rentals because I feel that there is, I guess, there's pros, a lot more pros than cons, especially because we're not causing any trouble to our neighbors. And we haven't had any complaints, and our neighbors still talk to us. They like us. They still wave to us and everything when they see us and chat with us. So we don't feel like we're causing any trouble in the neighborhood. If we were, we would find a different solution. But again, I don't know if other hosts have gotten, if you guys have received many complaints from neighbors or the police being called for parties, because I know two years ago, this is why this came about, was there was partying, bonfires all night. We don't allow that. At 10 o'clock, if people are outside, like, you know, having a party or get-together, you know, which has not happened, we tell them that it's quiet hours, you guys have to go inside or like, do it inside, whatever, like, if you're going to be using loud voices. So we're very on that, especially on the weekend. So with that being said, I guess that I just wanted to tell you guys our experience and then also let you guys kind of see our perspective, how we manage the property. We're full hands-on. We don't have another outside company. We're not some big corporation just like buying up houses in Roseville and renting them out and not maintaining them. So we're just small family owners. And yeah, we're just looking for the opportunity to continue to host families. We really like that. We have really great feedback from everybody. And I also own a cleaning company, and we are always very detailed and people really, you know, I guess, we're just, I don't know how to explain it, but we're really on everything. We've tried to provide the best accommodations for people coming in that need the housing and a furnished place for a family. And I guess that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional public comment? Feel free to come on up to the microphone. Quick question is fine, sure. We just need to have you on camera and on the microphone, so for the record.
My name is Faith Wilmar. We're living in 1130 Ryan Avenue West. We had been Airbnb hosts for past seven years, but me and my husband occupied property too. But now the problem is, we cannot go any travel. You know, I'm from China. My parents are really medical condition for like dying, but we cannot go together because of business. So I'm wondering if we do hire some people, not hire, if we have friends living in the property, help us to take care of the business, and then we go to the travel, and that's count, still count owner occupied or we have to have a license. But if you don't give us a license, so how we can continue our seven years of business in future? We cannot go travel anymore.
I don't know that we in the city council can answer that question, but I would suggest maybe some follow-up with Mr. England and the folks in the staff, and we can
Yeah.
interpret the code to make sure that your situation can be dealt with appropriately. So, but
Okay, yeah.
Appreciate you asking the question.
Yeah, so if we, if we stop to the short-term renting license, even in future, if we say, oh, we want to go travel, or we need a living upset, can we hire a manager company to manage our property, but we cannot apply a license anymore? So yeah, that's so sad.
Well, we'll definitely see if our, in fact, Mr. England, right behind you, might be able to help you with an answer to that.
Okay. So are waiting back?
Feel free to talk to him right now if you want to.
He might need to be part of our discussion.
But obviously, we will have to probably have him back shortly for our discussion. But anyway, is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone with their hand raised who's participating remotely?
Nobody has their hand raised.
Okay. Provide one more opportunity for members of the public to speak to this item?
We just got one.
Okay. That's usually what happens when it's last call.
Mr. Frank Hess, and I'll move him into the main room. All right, here he is.
All right, Mr. Hess, welcome.
Hope he's got it unmute.
Okay. Now can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, we caught you, Mr. Hess.
Okay. We're, Frank Hess, we are at 1913 Shady Beach Avenue. Just had a pop on here just to talk about the other side of things, just to kind of defend the other, the other side of the Airbnb thing. There's seven units in Roseville. Three of them are on our lake. Two of them are in our block. And it's not all, it's not all fabulous during the summer on the weekends, even with the new regulations. So we're trying to be good neighbors. We're trying to be cooperative so everybody can keep their hoses and keep their properties. But we love you, Mickey, but you probably don't know what goes on when you're not there and you have a family come over for the weekend. Usually, they're only there for probably three or four days, but they're, boy, do they have friends. Do they have a posse of people that come. So it does end up, I think there's a difference, we talked about this a couple of years ago with you guys, is the difference between a neighborhood and a lake property. And the lake properties end up becoming like a resort. Last year at Mickey's property, there was one time when I took a picture of five vehicles from three different states, and that was just one night. So each of those vehicles, I don't think they're all related. I don't think they're all in the same family, which I think they're supposed to be. And bonfires are, you know, on the property, near the property line, et cetera. So I just, Team Frank Hess is just going to bat for, for the other side to hope that we can keep this under wraps. We don't want to be the police. We don't want to have to call the police all the time. We don't want to have to call the city council all the time. So there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? Either raise your hand on Zoom, or if anyone is in the chambers and wishes to speak.
Can I clarify?
Actually, I was, I should have clarified, too. Once again, directing comments to the council on the issue rather than directing them to individuals, and I apologize for that. I meant to police that a little better. But I don't want this to sort of get into a back and forth, so we'll stipulate that there may be different perspectives amongst the individuals involved, and we'll let that set, you know, not necessarily being integral to our discussion at this time. Mr. Tredgen, anybody else participating remotely that has their hands raised?
There is nobody else with their hands raised.
All right. Hello and welcome.
Hello. My name is Noel Chu, and I live at 1964 Schreier Avenue West. And I do have also a property in Roseville that my in-laws live at most of the time. And we are looking at while they're traveling, having the opportunity, because they do sometimes go back to their home country of Malaysia for long periods, of being able to do something with that home so it doesn't just sit vacant for months on end. And so speaking to the opportunity of there being a ban, just speaking that that can be really disruptive when it comes to making plans, when you have an indeterminate amount of time where you, you're kind of stuck in limbo of what is the city going to do? And you, you know, I believe in good faith that you're doing what you can to do what's right. And, you know, listening to people's grievances, when it kind of turns into Party City on a lake, like, that would make me very frustrated as well. But that's not the situation I'm facing. So I think if there's a way that you can continue to consider and update and revise without putting a ban in place, like, can you do both and where you're allowing what you chose before to stand while you reevaluate? It's just raising the question of is a ban necessary? Because you are leaving people in limbo for an indeterminate amount of time. And I do feel for the people who, they did follow things and they set up their licenses, and now they're not sure if they're going to be able to keep going. And I do, outside of Roseville, have some short-term rentals, and those calendars can be booked out more than six months ahead. So if you suddenly revoke a license, that can cause a huge penalty and severe issues. So I would just ask the question of do you have to put a ban in place in order for you to reevaluate and reassess what you've already have in place?
Thank you. Appreciate that question. All right, one more opportunity for members of the public to speak to this item. Oh, there's one more.
The name is Richard Hess.
Okay, he's in. All right, hello and welcome. Mr. Hess?
Looks like his, he's connected. He's not muted.
Can you hear us, Mr. Hess? Doesn't appear to be the case.
Nope, but he is unmuted.
Probably experiencing some technical difficulties. It's not unheard of in this Zoom environment.
Still nothing.
Still nothing. If you have it unmuted, you need to unmute, or maybe there's some problems with that not working with your particular microphone. Sometimes there's more than one microphone. There's the webcam one, and then there's a headset. If one or the other is selected and you're trying to use the other one, that's a problem. Free Merrill technical advice.
Want to travel?
Not able to, no, nope. All right. We'll, we'll have to then proceed then, and perhaps we can retry it in a moment or two here and see if we can get it to work. Perhaps we'll go ahead as a council and just follow up. I don't know that there were questions raised that necessarily aren't just kind of part of our discussion per se. Certainly, I think we can consider whether or not to include renewals as part of what we're talking about, so that is on the table for us to talk about. I think the question of whether I think the question of whether we have to do this to, to review our program is, you know, is a legitimate question that we can figure out as a council as well. There are pros and cons to that, so we'll have to have that conversation. I don't know that there were other questions necessarily. Council, were there any other questions that speakers had that, that are maybe on a technical nature? Otherwise, we can maybe move into our council consideration. And if there are questions from the council for staff, we can cycle back to that and see if the council does have any questions. Otherwise, we'll open it up for council discussion. We've got the proposed ordinance before us. The purpose of the proposed ordinance is to provide a temporary halt, an intended temporary halt to issuance or renewal of the short term licenses to provide us the opportunity to consider any changes we may wish to consider to our program that we have in place. I'll open it up to the council once again. Councilmember.
I'd like to hear from staff. What I tried to move poorly last time was a halt to new. And the proposal that came back was new and renewals, kind of taking this code out and whatever. So I don't understand how we got to that point and what leeway we would have to do what, say, the mayor suggested, not affect the renewals, but only new licenses, for example. How we could do that?
My guess, and I'll defer to staff, but my guess is we can do whatever we want to.
I'm sure of that, but.
That's not a legal opinion, but we as a council by three, two vote. Let's go.
Sheriff, Mayor, members of the council. The first draft of the ordinance that the city attorney drafted did not include renewals based on the line of questioning that staff had received from council, both during the discussion at the January 30th meeting and numerous emails and phone calls after the meeting. The city manager and I discussed including renewals because we knew it would take some time to work through those issues. And so the city attorney redrafted the ordinance to include renewals. If you don't want to include renewals, I believe she's prepared with the previous draft of the ordinance where renewals would be allowed. And I just want to also note that none of the licenses right now have had issues. Now, I know some of the public had spoke about issues that they didn't report. But the way the ordinance works is they have to report the issue before it gets logged as a potential violation. And then you get two violations, I think, within 180 days before it can be suspended and/or revoked. So we do do that research before we bring the licenses forward for you to approve initially or to renew.
To the extent, once again, that there are actual reports to count. Other questions, I think I saw, Councilmember Shorter, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, now I have a new question. And what comes to the complaining, and I think this is part of why we want to take a look at it, is there's nowhere where you, if someone wants to complain, how do they know where to go or what to do or who to call? We don't really have that spelt out. I know the conversation is, well, you know, call you during the week or the police. But I think that's part of the confusion for neighbors. They don't have it very clear on who to call or when or that kind of thing. So that's part of the problem on that. And, and I, my recollection was when Councilmember Etten made his motion that it was just for the new license and not for the renewals. Because we, I think we do have to consider that people have done this in good faith and we do not want to interrupt their businesses while we are looking at this. You know, which doesn't mean if, it doesn't mean that we can't someday ban it. I mean, that's it, but for what we discussed, it was new licenses. Because we've talked about distance and we talked about numbers and some of that. And so that's where, there's so much confusion around this whole thing. We did not want to create more. We wanted to get ahead of this. And, but I am in support of having it for new and not for renewals because I think that puts a burden on people. They, for the rules we have in place, they did follow that. And I do not support denying a renewal for them while we are looking at this. So those are my comments.
All right, Mr. Trudgeon.
If I could, one of the reasons we did include that in there is because, A, we didn't know how long it would be taking. We just heard testimony about one area of town that have multiple on the block. And if we start talking about distance requirements, we don't want to be in a position where we automatically renewed some until we've had that conversation. So while I think it's very likely we can get the conversation done and maybe something approved before the next one's up, we just don't know how long it's going to take. So we don't want to set ourselves up by automatic renewing and then having some ordinances that's conflicting. The sooner we can get to it, obviously, and sort it out, then it's less of a, less of an issue. But that was the thinking behind it. But I understand where you're coming from as well.
I can understand that.
Sure.
One more question on that, about taking a look at that. I'm curious about the process of doing that. So if we are trying to look at updating this, how would that be done? Would it be staff and trying to get people on both sides from the public in a focus group to look at this? Or how do you imagine addressing, looking at these different regulations and improving them?
Once again, it could be in whatever shape the council would like it to be. What we've done in the past is listen to council input, go and research maybe what other cities do and bring that back for a conversation. We allow for a public dialogue, obviously, in our meetings. To date, I haven't heard about setting up a special task force, but that's something that's always at our discretion as a council for you to, you know, have us do that. That will probably be a longer process, just forewarned.
That's why, that's why I was concerned.
Well, just to that, and I know other councilmembers have questions too. An example is our single family rental program that we put in place in their, like, 2005 timeframe, 2006. I believe we did have a group that consisted of both owners and neighbors and I think planning commission members, because I was part of it as a planning commission member at the time. And I don't know that that, I want to say it was like a three to six month period, but that's just a rough recollection. Certainly, somebody would have to verify that. And that was sort of a guided conversation. You know, in that case, there was a consultant that did the guiding of the conversation. I don't know that we have to do that necessarily, given where we are today versus then. Although, obviously, if it's staff, it's staff time, so there's that issue too. So but, and I know we've had offers from a couple of folks to be a part of that, at least certainly on the part of owners. So we do want to, you know, at least put that as part of the conversation. It doesn't mean that that's how we have to proceed, but certainly it's on the table. And I say, I think as Mr. Trudgeon said, and as I had said earlier, we can kind of do what we want to do in this regard, so. Other councilmembers, Councilmember Graff, did you?
I did. I do not support having these, the current licenses penalized for this. That does not make sense to me, so I would really want that withdrawn. We passed an ordinance in good faith two years ago. And these people have acted in good faith with that. So I'm just thinking that that does not make sense. The other thing is, yes, it may take some time, but I think in some cases, government needs to be pushed along here a little bit instead of taking all the time that we want to. And I don't think four months is a undue burden on the council to address this issue. So those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Strong.
I would actually consider including the people not having, allowing renewals. As we talk about the proximity, and especially with the person who just came forward on Schreier, that brings, calls into question what we've already heard from neighbors on Ryan and Tatum in a very close proximity. And so if we already have three in, along the South Owasso area, I just think if we want to make changes in any other neighborhood, we need to know what we're working with. So if we say, sure, those three can stay, well, then how are we going to say that the three in, on Schreier, Ryan and Tatum cannot exist in that cluster? So I think we really need to look at it as a whole. And I agree with Councilmember Graff. I think we can, we should do this quickly. We shouldn't just drag our feet. And I realize that a long process. If you want to see 2020, I encourage you to go back at 2021. There was a lot of discussion and it went on for a really long time. And I think we did give a lot of people, a lot of opportunity to weigh in as we discovered what we wanted to do initially. I think this should be a tweaking of just making sure we are ahead of it. Because if we start getting, you know, I understand if I lived on Shady Beach Avenue and now four or five of the homes on that block were all short term rentals and I had nothing to stop a speeding train. I'm sorry, I don't think we're having comment right now. I think I would want to have some mechanism and I think we need to look at it as a whole. And so I feel like if we just say, well, those are okay, then we don't have any recourse for at least another year to go back and take those away from those people if we were going to. I'm not saying we're going to, but I'm just saying we can't look at it holistically if we're piecemealing it and we're not looking at it as a whole. And the other thing I'm concerned about is compliance. In the last couple of weeks, we've had so many people come forward and say, well, did you look at Airbnb? This person's not compliant. This person's not compliant. I'm just wondering how realistic is that we are putting this on staff? Who, unlike the compliance checks of the alcohol and tobacco, who is supposed to be the monitor? People keep volunteering, well, are we really relying on them? Do they have voluntary motive when they've left three people they know? We don't know what the, we need to have a system of how we're complying with this and know what, what the expectation is. And I think over and over again, what we keep hearing is, you know, how many of these places say 10 people? Well, okay, it doesn't reflect even there, the letter of what we're saying about the short term rentals. It's for unrelated adults or family up to certain. And yet people, somebody who sent us something for a bench handout today, it says blatantly 10 people. And if there's five cars from three different states, well, that's probably, you know, I mean, how distantly related? How are we policing that? So I think we really need to be, I would take a holistic approach and say the whole second proposal.
In other words, the existing proposal that's.
Correct. That includes them. But I would, we moved quickly on THC. We can move quickly on other things.
Other thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Atten.
Can we see the alternate version? Do we have that, that we can look at?
So I'm presuming the alternate version.
Describe the difference in language or?
It allows renewals, essentially.
Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, I have it on my computer. I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure the best way to show it to you. I could certainly walk you through the current draft and tell you the changes between the two since the current draft should be in front of you. Would that be helpful?
Sure.
If you can email that to me, I can have that printed off.
I can do it.
Actually, if we got.
I think I have it.
All right, so we can pull up the current draft in our packet here?
I'll pull it up right here.
We don't happen to have it in a way that we can have it on the screen for everybody.
I did just email it to Mr. Trudgeon, so I don't know what kind of magic he can perform.
He can do some pretty impressive magic.
But I could just walk you through it as well, if you have it in front of you. The first change is going to be to section 909.04. You know, it talks about that all licenses issued under this chapter are effective upon issuance and shall expire one date from issuance. And then all required renewal applications shall be received and submitted. Now, that is no longer struck out in the draft. The late fee is no longer struck out. And the violation section is no longer struck out.
Okay.
In 909.05, the phrase a late renewal and late renewal fee is no longer stricken. Change to 909.06. I'm not, I can read this from the other draft, but allowed the license to operate. And then the addition, this is getting confusing now, addition of until expiration of such license is no longer added. And then, but the remainder of it is, is continues following the effective date of this chapter. No further license will be issued, no change in occupancy type approved, and no transfer, just transfer of license will be permitted. I, I left the strikeouts, which is certainly a judgment call that council could make about whether or not the, you would allow any kind of a transfer or a change in occupancy. I did leave all of those stricken. So if they're under the draft, as I drafted it, there's the existing license in the existing location with the existing owners would be allowed to continue, but nothing else would. So rather than go through all the different words for that, I think that's maybe the clearest way to put that. And I think, I think that's it. But the intent of the council, as I understand it, is just as I just stated it. What's going on right now with these people in this location would be allowed to continue and be renewed, but nothing else. If there's a revocation, it would then basically be permanent or until a new license is in place. That's, that's what the draft reflects.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we have a paper copy. Doing that on the spot, okay. All right, other, and maybe just to weigh in a little bit. You know, I'm not 100% sure that we need to even make the changes that we're kind of considering here. You know, we've had a number of, you know, licenses in place and we've also had a number of owner occupied in place. And, you know, it doesn't seem that we've got a case of a lot of issues. And once again, if people aren't reporting, that's a, that's a whole other issue. That's an issue we have with owner occupied, single family homes that people are living in permanently. If nobody's reporting the issues, you know, we don't know about them, so we can't do anything about it. You know, and as I mentioned in our last council meeting, a lot of times, and was mentioned during the comment, with long term renters and with, with homeowners, issues that are acute in the neighborhood can go on and on and on because there's a lot of due process involved in dealing with those issues. And, and there's, you know, all the questions about whether people are reporting everything and things like that, and the potential for, you know, sensing the likelihood of retaliation or that sort of thing. So there's all kinds of issues that we have in all kinds of situations that we have to kind of deal with. And, you know, I want to make sure that we're not necessarily penalizing people who are otherwise doing a good job of operating these short term rentals, apparently. You know, because of concerns about potential future rentals that we, we don't know about yet. And so I'm still not sure what I want to do and how I'll, I'll vote on all of this. But I just wanted to kind of put that out there because everybody else has been talking a little bit about where they're coming from. I think if we do want to look at the changes, it's conceivable we could do it without changing our current ordinance and let things continue to go forward and just make the changes when, you know, when we have them ready. I think there are some probably legitimate concerns about, especially as we're getting into the sort of potential high rental season, a bunch of license applications coming in during that period and being, having to be considered under the current scheme and whether that's a good idea. And so I understand the notion that Councilmember Atten brought forward at our last meeting to do that pause. I tend to be sympathetic to allowing the renewals to occur for existing license holders who are otherwise in good, good stead with the city. So that's, that's where I come down on that. And then I agree that we should try to get this wrapped up as quickly as we can. I think the first, the first renewal, as was noted, is about four months from now. The, the next round of renewals is two months, two, three months after that. So we have about seven months, months at that point to work with and, and, you know, maybe a two to three month period where that first license holder might not be able to have a license. But not that that's a good thing. I want to be clear about that, but it's a limited, somewhat controlled impact if, if that happens. But I think we should try to do this as quickly as possible. And so there's, and there's a number of questions we have to deal with. I think there is a question of, you know, do we look at the spacing? Do we look at the spacing only related to other licensed short term rentals? Or do we look at the spacing relative to any other type of rental? Do we look at, you know, do we require people to have more specific rules for their rentals? And, you know, to what extent we can require that and what that means? And so I think that's something we might want to think about. I think they'll limit on the number of short term licenses, nonoccupied, has been brought forward. Do we want to change or add any regulation for owner occupied? There's some allusion from previous speakers at previous meetings that there may be just as many issues with owner occupied as with non-owner occupied, contrary to our suspicions during the original process. And then, you know, how this all relates to the long term rentals as well. I think I mentioned that before. And do we want to consider, or can we even? I don't even need an answer at this point. But do we want to consider something like requiring all the license holders to provide, you know, contact information to all? you know, contact information to all property owners within so many feet of their property? And to help facilitate that communication part, obviously, we hope everybody is already doing that and being a good neighbor. But do we want to mandate that sort of thing? And there could be a whole host of other things that I haven't even thought of, but those are just some things that I think have come up through comments and questions or off the top of my own head. I think if we get into that type of discussion, I would like to see something that involves, uh, input from current licensees perhaps as well as neighbors. And I don't know if that's, you know, how formal of a group or a process that might be. But I think, um, one of the things that happened with our original process, you know, one of the things was it was during COVID, and so I think that impacted our ability to kind of work normally through a process. And I, I think that, that was a part of delay. I think we also were very dependent on staff research and scheduling things to be on council agendas for council discussions, which can stretch out a process, especially towards the end of the year when we might not have as many meetings. And so that's a part of it. And I think that actually a group of people can do a lot of those discussions sort of in a fairly quick fashion behind the scenes without being subject to the council meeting schedule and, and that sort of thing. So that may, there may be some advantage to that type of approach, and it may make sense to get people who are vested in the process involved in those discussions about all those types of issues and who knows what else. So those are some of my thoughts without necessarily offering a proposal as to what to do. You know, it could be a framework of one sort or another depending on where the council wants to go. Councilmember Strong.
I think that one thing I haven't heard mentioned is whether or not we permit management companies to be managing short-term license, um, units, um, because that came up here this evening. And then if someone does have multiple units that are being rented as an owner occupied, does that change their ability to, do they have to somehow recertify their houses, multi, you know, try to get multi-density housing designation? Or the number of units that can be rented out of a single home? So I think, I don't know. I think the number of questions that we have, I would like to move forward with having some type of, um, just moratorium on things as we, um, as we gather information. I think it's, um, I think it's hard for us to create regulations while we're still operating with the, because then I think a lot of people are going to try to hurry and get under while we're talking about it. And I just think it'd be an easier process if we limited to those, uh, that we have right now and not allow anyone else, but also keep ourselves to a very strict timeline.
Councilmember Ratten.
I would like to move the bench handout for Title IX, Chapter 909, um, that we have here that, uh, that does not allow new, uh, but allows the renewal of current licenses.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Groff to adopt the ordinance, uh, bench handout version, which allows for the renewals, as was discussed earlier, and is obviously in the text of the bench handout. Um, it's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Groff. Uh, Councilmember Ratten is the maker of the motion as to the motion.
Thank you. I think we've, we've talked a lot about this, but, um, thinking about, um, until tonight, uh, not having any feedback of concerns from our current, uh, licensees, I think is an important piece for me, um, understanding how the process works for short-term rentals and, um, the two, four, six, eight-month ahead-of-time bookings that happen and, and the penalties for folks. We are putting people in a pretty rough financial situation if we would do a full, uh, revocation of this. So, uh, I think this balances some of what we need to do. I agree that we need to move quickly, but we're not famous for that. So I want to make sure that we are not penalizing people while we're doing that. It does not add to, um, any problem we may or may not have, but, uh, holds us in our current frame. So I think this is a good middle ground, allows things to move forward, um, with any changes we might want without making, um, an unnecessary complete ban. I want to suggest a few other things that we might consider. For places that are on, operating under our scheme, they would need to not publish, um, rentals below our city code. So if it's seven days, we can't have people publishing, you know, you can rent this for four days online.
I think that might be part of our subsequent discussion after we deal with the ordinance about sort of pausing things.
The, the mayor made a whole bunch of suggestions, so I thought, well, I should add these things.
Yeah, yeah. We, we're at a, at a point of having the motion right now, so.
I'll bring them up later.
I did mention that, and I don't, I don't want, I certainly don't want to stifle that conversation, but I do want to try to organize our, our, our work here a little bit.
I have no problem. I'm done.
All right, I appreciate that. I just kind of snuck some things in before we had a motion, so.
So.
Anyway, uh, appreciate that. Uh, additional discussion on the motion as the second or Councilmember Groff?
No, I would echo Councilmember Ratten's comments. I think it's a matter of fairness, and people have been running, running, uh, good Airbnbs in the city, and there's a, a need for that, actually. It's a type of housing out there. This isn't something detrimental to a city. This is something positive for a city. And if they run correctly, it's a good thing. Um, no, maybe we don't know. I think we're almost looking for problems here. There are a few people that have complained about things, but with seven Airbnbs, we don't have a huge, long laundry list of complaints going on. So I just think this makes sense, and I don't want to punish people that have been acting of good faith.
Right. Additional discussion on the motion? Uh, Councilmember Schröder.
I think it, um, it's, it's a good, you know, I, motion on that is because people who have, um, gotten their license and are doing within the law, to not be able to give them an exact date of when we're going to have this done, I think puts undue burden on them. And so that's why I would support it. And I think, um, you know, that it does not mean that someday we may not, we could still ban them. I mean, so this motion, just for today, we're not banning, but it doesn't get the council, you know, it doesn't say we will absolutely not do it. I'm not saying I'm for that, but I'm just saying that does not, uh, preclude that that is still on the table for people, so. But for now, I think this makes a lot of sense that we want to, um, make sure and give people who have their license some security to know that this in two or three or four months, that is, the rug's going to be pulled up from under them because they can't renew, so I'll support it.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? I think I've been convinced that it makes sense to have something in place instead of sort of trying to change the regulations while we're having new, uh, applications come in. So I will support the motion as well. And I do appreciate the exemption of, uh, renewals and allowing existing license holders to continue to renew. I think, as was stated very well, that takes a, a lot of burden off of them. The other thing it's important to note is that this has no impact whatsoever on our existing licensing of long-term rentals and the fact that, uh, short-term rentals that are owner occupied are not under either of those schemes right now and continue to operate, uh, without those types of regulations. So this doesn't change any of that. Uh, those long-term renter owners are able to continue, and, um, the short-term with owner occupied are able to continue without being licensed. So it really is only impacting the issuance of new short-term licenses for non-owner occupied. With that, we have the motion before us unless there's any additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. That motion passes four to one with Councilmember Schron and opposition. Uh, we also do have to pass a, uh, ordinance summary, and I'm presuming that the summary is able to go ahead without any changes or is.
Two words.
Just have to remove or renewal on line 26.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Councilmember Ratten.
I would move the ordinance summary, um, including that change on line 26 of removing or renewal.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schröder. Uh, discussion on the motion, uh, hearing, oh, Councilmember Ratten. Okay, sorry.
Accident.
That's all right. Uh, and this one, once again, requires a supermajority, or two-thirds vote, which in the case of five member councils, four. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. That passes four to zero with abstention from Councilmember Schron on basis of having not supported the original motion. Um, all right, thank you. Do we want to spend some time providing a little bit of, and I know Councilmember Ratten was, was poised and ready with some more suggestions of, of topics, so I'm presuming we do want to do that, at least to the extent we can this evening. So I'll turn over, uh, Councilmember Ratten and certainly other council members, if you've got other topics or, or things that have already been mentioned that you want to pull off the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think the, the list that you provided is, uh, brings up a lot of the things we need to think through. Um, I also agree, uh, some, uh, agree with what Councilmember Schron brought up is that we did have a significant amount of input, uh, a year ago, a year and a half ago. So, um, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here again, but, um, other things beyond that minimum stay that's published, um, is, uh, looking at a notification of neighbors, uh, as I think you mentioned, but even as that, um, new application or renewal application comes forward, that there will be some notification process. Uh, maybe there is. No, there is not. So I think that might be something to consider. Um, I would think it might be interesting to look at that owner occupied registration process on the side of this, even if it's a simple, um, registration, not going through a major code update. And, um, I'm curious to, to hear from our staff about, I, I, so far I've heard, we don't know how we can get this done, and that was also brought up as a concern. How do we track, um, not just our current ones, but, uh, that we know about, but the ones we don't really know about, but are clearly operating in our city? So, um, so I'd be curious about what we might need to do to, uh, bring some compliance in there and bring people into the fold so we're all on the same page.
Are there thoughts of things we want to make sure are on the agenda to talk about? Uh, Councilmember Groff.
I think Councilmember Ratten mentioned this, but the advertising, I would like us to monitor that. So have, have some, or at least have a discussion about that so that people aren't advertising, like 10 people could stay in the property or so that we're very clear on what those regulations are so they understand family members or for unrelated adults is what we have currently.
Councilmember Schröder.
I think we need to put some definitions in. Um, what is the definition of seven-day stay? I think there is even some confusion on that seven days staying at a place, not seven days that it's not occupied. So I think some definitions need to possibly be put in place. And I'm still, um, this whole thing about violations and compliance and how to complain, I really think we need to figure out a better way to do that. You know, obviously, earlier today, listening and how we did the compliance for tobacco and alcohol was great because now you know this is what we're doing and it's, you know, boom, boom. Some way, we need to have something very similar to that for this, because this is frustrating for staff. It's frustrating for neighbors to figure out, one, how to do it, who to do it, and, and, you know, and then it's all this he said, she said kind of thing. So I think we need to spend some time around that whole compliance piece, some conversation, because I think this is where part of our frustrations for everybody is on that piece. So that's, that's, um, the two pieces I'd like to see.
Anything else, uh, as far as topics for, uh, going forward on this? The only, I, just to kind of add to the, a couple of the things both Councilmember Groff and Councilmember Ratten, and I think also Councilmember Schröder brought up, and actually, well, okay, all of us, the notion of if there are additional resources required, uh, to do the enforcement adequately, and, you know, can we fund that through the program as well? So I think that's, that's something we want to, you know, have part of, of the conversation as well. I would just ask, uh, from the council's perspective, do we want to look at the possibility of having some sort of, sort of working group, for lack of a better word, that, that provides that sort of input from interested parties on, in the different categories? And whether, and, and how formalized we want, might want to make that, whether that's more of a sounding board for staff or if that's more of an actual group that like meets on a routine basis and has structured, organized conversations? Or where are we at? Uh, Councilmember Ratten?
I don't think I'm at the point where we have a regularly meeting group, meaning over a period of time. So, uh, an open, uh, opportunity for people to do that, if you meet, maybe in a public open house, to get some feedback from different sides or something like that. But I'm not looking for any ongoing regular meeting group of humans. I think that would be hard to.
Humans or any, anything else?
Or anything else.
Okay. Councilmember Schröder.
I see this as updates to an existing ordinance. I don't see this as a brand-new thing that we're starting over. We've had a lot of input over a long period of time, and so I also do not see this as a standing group. I see this as a, you know, maybe there's a comment for a couple of days where people have an opportunity to present something, but I think all in all, it's our attempt to improve and, um, codify and kind of make clear to people and ourselves what it is that we look for and what we expect. I don't see that as starting from ground zero, and I don't think we need to be there.
Uh, Councilmember Schröder.
Well, just one comment. Possibly those who have sent in emails on both sides on this issue, maybe we could send out something that says we're reviewing this and say, you know, we would value any input, just some very, you know, give people the chance to not only have frustration with it, but possibly even say, okay, so do you have some ideas and solutions too, so they feel they're part of it? I know, because I hear over and over again, residents don't feel that they, they hear about it after the fact. When, you know, when they have, when we have these chances for people to come speak, they say, why do we even get a chance to speak when you've already made up your mind? So, I mean, it would be nice to be able to, at least the people that we know that have contacted us, to at least have the opportunity just to say, hey, you know, and it doesn't have to be a formal meeting, just maybe send out an email and say, hey, you know, we, we would value your input, because at least then maybe they can feel they're at the beginning of it instead of the end.
And that may make sense, you know, what are ideas that we should be talking about at the beginning of the process? And then an opportunity to kind of weigh in on some of the, the outcomes of some of the research and the work and the idea, the, you know, the options we have before us when we get to a decision point as well, maybe a, a sort of a vetting of those before the final recommendations come forward, subject to what they are. And certainly sta- staff can kind of figure out what makes the most sense and from, from your own perspectives as well to, to incorporate that input and into the process. All right. Anything else from the council on this? Does staff feel like you've got, got good guidance from the council to get started on this?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get started, and we'll bring back, I think, a discussion based on all these points. Begin the discussion, all the points you brought up, and give our perspective and thoughts on it. Then we can kind of go from there and shape in whatever direction the council wants to go from there.
That sounds good. Appreciate, once again, all the input from everybody who's been involved in this and sort of all sides of it, and, and I think we've, uh, continued to have, for the most part, a very constructive conversation, and hopefully that will continue as we go forward. All right, with that, I think we can proceed with, uh, the rest of our few administrative-type items on the agenda this evening.
Nope.
Oh, that's right, I forgot. Seven J. Thank you for that reminder.
Good job.
All right, I'll, uh, turn it over maybe to Councilmember Ratten to introduce this item more substantially, uh, for our consideration this evening.
Sure. I've had an opportunity to work with Keystone over the last several years on some, on different things, and I was contacted by their, um, president about an updated, um, letter of support from the city of Roseville for their, uh, capital outlay request or their capital request to the state of Minnesota that is part of their new grocery and service, um, building that is in St. Paul, but then also hosts the mobile food shelf vans and vehicles that come to Roseville and other areas in our, in our north metro here, as well as providing services for our folks who go down there. So, um, I feel it'd be very good for us to support them. Again, this is really an update with some new numbers based on, uh, changes to construction costs and things like that, but essentially is what we supported a year ago.
And just a year change at the top, 2023.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Year change at the top? Uh, this is the old letter, right?
Well, I put today's date on there, but it didn't change the year, so my, I was still living in the past. Well, I was gonna say, it's got my signature on it, and I don't remember.
I was curious, but, yeah. But otherwise, numbers are updated?
Yeah, so the center file and house file, uh, numbers were changed, uh, the year 22 to 23 mostly, except for the date. The actual request, I think it was, I was just trying to pull it up, was $4 million they're asking, so they reduced that, or they're asked to the state, uh, to 2.6 million. They've done some substantial fundraising, so we just changed those numbers based on, um, what they have. But otherwise, it's the same format as last year's letter the council proved to send out.
Any other questions from council members? All right. Is there a motion on this? Well, actually, we just double-check. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item? Thumbs up from the audience. All right, is there a motion from the council to approve issuing that letter?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Schron to provide an, uh, updated letter in 2023 in support of Keystone's funding request from the state. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That letter's approved, and I just note I do authorize my electronic signature continuing to be used on that for the public record. All right, that then brings us to a couple of administrative items. We've got a couple of meeting minutes from our council meeting and EDA meeting on January 23rd of this year. If there are any changes or corrections that need to be noted, please bring those forward at this time. Otherwise, the motion to approve as presented would be in order.
I move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Schröder, seconded by Councilmember Eton to approve both sets of minutes as presented. Any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those minutes are. Those minutes are approved. That brings us then to consideration of the consent agenda. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon to introduce those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $833,571.29. Item 10B approves a cigarette tobacco products license to the new Holiday Gas Station at 1215 Larbinder Avenue and THC products licenses to Roseville, to the Roseville Tobacco Nists at 2217 Stellon Avenue and Noble Tobacco at 1681 Rice Street. Item 10C approves various expenditures, one of them being design and equipment for the new playground at Kaya Park, including a turtle-themed element and interpretive items within the park. This action also approves expenditures for spot repairs on the City Hall Maintenance Center roof to fix leaks that, and the purchase of a battery backup for several traffic signals. Item 10D accepts donations from the Roseville Police Department totaling $15,750. We have a listing of all the donors there and really appreciate their donations in support of the city and the police department. Item 10E approves applying for grants to continue the funding for the auto theft investigator investigator in the police department, as well as some grant dollars for equipment to help deter auto theft in Roseville. As you know, we did have this grant agreement this past year here. If it is successful, we will have grant funding for the auto theft investigator through June 30, 2026. And as we know, we had increases in crime over this last summer here, especially regarding auto theft. And this makes a big, important dent into resolving those issues. Item 10F adopts a resolution approving entering into a cooperative agreement with MINDOT regarding the trunk highway 36 and Fairview Avenue ramp improvement project to take place this summer. Item 10G, G approves entering into an encroachment agreement with the homeowner at 931 County Road B. The homeowner is looking to extend the driveway to their detached garage over the existing sewer line. Under the encroachment agreement, the city would not be responsible for any replacement or repair to the driveway if there was a need to take up a sewer line, although we do not anticipate we'll ever have a need to do that. Then finally, Item 10H approves a resolution removing a segment of Oakcrest Avenue from municipal state aid system and adding a segment of West Stelling Service Road from Roseland to County Road B to the state aid system. And that is the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion to approve those consent items?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strong to approve consent items A through H. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
I just note officially that it was County Road B two that that encroachment agreement was on.
Sorry.
County Road B.
Cut into there.
With that, we've got the motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All those items are approved or accepted. That brings us then to future agenda review. Councilmember Communications, Reports and Announcements. And first, a future agenda, Mr. Trudgeon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see I continue to have problems with dates. Our next meeting's February 27th, not the 24th. My apologies. We have a proclamation for Women's History Month. We'll have the nine North Executive Director here just to present and introduce himself. We'll be receiving a city equity update as well as a separate case of the city workforce report. We did send you a preview of that over the weekend here. We also will have the Brahman Fissus Final Platte. And then I'll look toward the contract for the compensation and classification study. And then also consider joining the fence consortium, join powers authority. Our next meeting after that is March 6th. I did note to the council today that we did receive an appeal from Prince of Peace Church. And so we will need to have the city council meet as board adjustments and appeals to consider staff's determination that the micro units that are located on the property are not allowed. And that comes to you for interpretation and a decision. We also, at this point at least, look to have the zoning code update phase two. Conversation of the ordinance is that we talked about last time, as well as some of the things coming from Public Works. We also would be considering the ARPA funds, grant dollars for nonprofits. We are, have been collecting applications. So we expect to have a few more come in and have you folks consider granting ARPA grant dollars. And if you recall, that's up to $10,000 to help with our nonprofits. The 13th, we do have an EDA meeting. We have two items. One, we want to continue conversations with the EDA just on the, on the commercial sector out there. And this year, we're going to bring forward an industrial development, not a director, industrial broker to come forward and just talk about the state of the industrial market. Also, we want to talk about small business micro grant programs, something we've brought up before. That's something we would maybe want to leverage ARPA dollars here initially to get going. At the regular meeting, we'll have the excess cash reserve report that we do typically at this time of year. The books will be closed. We'll bring back the conversation about the inter-fund loan payback to Lexington Shops. And then also consider massage therapy code amendments. We've been working with the city attorney and just on tweaking some drafts we've had previously. We'll bring that forward for a discussion. And certainly it'd be in a condition for you to approve it, but given that it's a big topic, you may want to have some conversation. So we'd be happy to bring it back later, but we'd at the very least want to bring it forward for conversation and review. And that's what I have for future agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Other questions on the future agenda? The items that councilmembers would like to bring forward for future agendas? Any reports or announcements from councilmembers? Councilmember Strong.
I'd just like to remind people that the deadline for commissioner applications is March 1st. So we really hope we get a very diverse group of people who can help direct our work. We are very appreciative for the time and effort they put in and guiding what we, what we know and how we move forward.
It's a good point. And I think we've, it's basically if there's any commission you're interested in, apply. And so not specific to certain vacancies. All right. Any other announcements, communications, reports? All right. Hearing none. The only other item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schroder, seconded by Councilmember Strong to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. It is 8:14. You were very on time that time.